Thank you for that, and if we can take the roll?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Thank you. We, I am sitting in for Commissioner Savraj as she has a family emergency that she's dealing with, so we wish her well in that. The next item that we're going to cover is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion?
No move. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner West. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. And that passes. Item five is review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and Human Services. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Cordiak.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Any discussion on those? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Item number six is approval of minutes from the September 27, 2006 County Board Meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cordiak. Any additions or subtractions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That motion passes as well. Okay, wonderful. Well, this morning we have three items under Chair's remarks, and we're going to start off first with the, a grant recognizing award for the Anoka County Drug Court. And it is a, we want to, we want first and all, recognize the opportunity within our court system to help people who are struggling with addiction. And we're honored today to have Judge Bethany Fountain Lindberg with us. Your Honor?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity of coming this morning and bringing you this exciting news that Anoka County has been awarded a $350,000 grant to implement and initiate, launch, an adult drug court. Those funds will last for a period of three years, which is essentially the pilot program. Adult drug courts have been extensively studied. They've been in existence for decades in areas such as California. Haven't done much with, of that in Minnesota. We started a specialty court and veterans court here about two or three years ago, but we have never had an adult drug court. But what we do know is they're cost efficient and they're very effective as an alternative to imprisonment. It encourages accountability. It promotes rehabilitation. It gives residents of Anoka County a meaningful second chance at life after a history of chemical use. Drug courts target people who have committed serious nonviolent crimes and who are struggling and failing with traditional probation and have that component of chemical use. They can also have mental health issues and often do, and that does not preclude them from being involved in a drug court. In drug court, we target the high-risk, high-need individuals that have alcohol or chemical dependency issues as well as other barriers. It's a holistic approach. It's an 18-month program. It's weekly drug court with at least two random drug testing a week. So during these 18 months, by the time they graduate, we focus on sobriety. We intensively supervise them. We ensure they have stable housing, reliable transportation. They have a GED or a high school diploma. We have them work with the workforce center. We've assessed mental health. We've stabilized their mental health, and they're sober. So it's a true rehabilitation process instead of our typical criminal adult system where it's punishment. So it's a punishment, accountability, and rehabilitation. We're changing the person, places, and things. In other words, they have to change who they hang out with, where they're hanging out, and what things they're doing. Try to get them into a stable, sober, support network. This is through the U.S. Department of Justice. They distributed this year $13 million to 41 states and tribal courts. Anoka County received two grants. I think it's unprecedented. I have never heard of the federal government giving one county two large grants out of the same pool of money. And I think that shows their support and belief in the strong program we're promoting and the strong program we have with Vet Court. So Vet's Court received money out of that same pool of money, $300,000. Adult Drug Court, $350,000. So out of that $13 million, Anoka County residents are going to benefit for $650,000. And to make that grant happen and to make that grant strong, Anoka County gave us your leaders, probation, sheriff, county attorney's office, a defense attorney, treatment centers. It was the Anoka County leaders that gave us in-kind support through their experts to help us develop this program. And I am thrilled, and I want to thank you for all that support, and hope that I'm allowed to come back and give you an update after we've implemented the drug court. I invite you all to come and observe it, but it's very exciting, directly serving the residents of Anoka County.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I should comment that Judge Fountain Lindberg has been highly instrumental in, in going forward, putting together this particular program and applying for the grant. So I think it's because of her efforts that we have received the grant and that the citizens of Anoka County will benefit. So I certainly want to congratulate Judge Fountain Lindberg on all her hard work and her efforts at getting this. And at number two, we're seeing this as a crime prevention tool, not just addressing some of the individual problems of the people that come before the court, but seeing this as a way of preventing crimes in the future because what we are targeting are those people that are committing the crimes because of their addiction. And not just they have an addiction, but they're committing other crimes. So if we can at least arrest that addiction, so to speak, we can prevent future crimes. And that's why we think this is so beneficial to the citizens of Anoka County. And again, congratulations to Judge Fountain Lindberg on all her hard work in making this happen.
And if I could just comment one on that. That's a very good point. In looking and writing this grant, Anoka County has, in our demographics, a higher percentage of property crimes than other counties in the state. And that higher number of property crimes is being driven by drug use. And so we're trying to reduce recidivism, reduce repeat offending, reduce that property crime level to below the state average by addressing the chemical dependency use. So this isn't targeting necessarily drug crimes. It's crimes that have been committed as a result of addiction.
Thank you. Commissioner Cordiak?
Thank you. And your role, Your Honor, is duly noted. I've recognized it for a long time and has been pointed out. It's much appreciated. Much this might not have happened had you not been engaged. I probably said before, and I look at some of my own background, but, but, but we can lock people up all day long. But until we step into their lives and hold them by the hand and walk them through some of these life issues, we really don't impact change. You know, going to jail is the opposite direction as far as I'm concerned. You learn more that you should know. So this is a very important step. The, the federal government, or any government, doesn't just give away money, though. Just give away money. They, not laying around. They're looking for success. They're looking for things that work. So I'm optimistic that we and our various departmental entities are working hard to make sure we fashion something that, that we can look upon later with great success and, and model in other arenas, learn from those who've been doing this, and add something to the pot to enrichalize those who are struggling with a very difficult life addiction, that war on drugs just ain't gone nowhere in 40 years. We're going the wrong direction. That's the right direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cordiak. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just thinking about how hopeless people who have had this problem feel when they get sentenced to prison. And it gives them hope. I think that just the hope they get from handling it this way is going to boost their success and freedom.
I think, you know, we often get a annual report from our medical examiner, and it never ceases to amaze me of, you know, the, the effect that drug, drugs have on cases she sees. And the number of people that don't make good decisions as it relates to drugs and how it impacts their lives and their families, and ultimately, they end up, you know, dying or something of that nature. And it never ceases to amaze me how it impacts every single facet just about of what she does there. And, and it just kind of, it kind of really bothers me from the standpoint that so many people are caught up on this. And I think we all know, you know, either family or friends and people that have, that have made these, these mistakes. And so having an opportunity like this, I know, you know, I have friends that are in the rehab business as well, and they, they're somewhat critical of the 30-day rehab. It really doesn't get to the issue. And so 18 months of constantly checking these people and drug testing them and, and making sure that they're sober, I think, is absolutely the right step. And really want to thank you for your, your leadership in this and your hard work and, and for the people that gave us the grant and the money that I'm sure will be very well spent. And we're looking forward to great results, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Judge. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Judge? The program, the grants go into effect in 2017?
No, actually, they're, they go into effect in October of this year.
Okay.
So by the end of this month, and we hope to launch the first drug court by the first Thursday in November.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number two is, our second item is to highlight Anoka County's participation in Lights On After School campaign. Commissioner Gamache is our library board liaison, and I will ask him to cover it.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Research shows that after-school programs are well worth the time and investment. Young people who participate in after-school programs show improved school attendance, behavior, and core academic performance. The Anoka County Library offered nearly 1,500 classes and events for kids, and you know what? Most of those kids said they learned something new. Leading the effort for the Anoka County Library is Director Maggie Snow. And Maggie, you have a guest with you today. Please introduce everybody.
Commissioners, I'm Maggie Snow. I'm the Director of the Anoka County Library, and I'm here with Caitlin Hyde-Gurken-Green, who is one of our librarians at the Crooked Lake Library. And we are pleased to be here today to support Lights On After School. At home, at school, or out in the community, youth are always learning, and the library, as a place of public education, plays a critical role in youth development. Our librarians and our community partners ensure that kids have the intellectual, social, and emotional support they need to thrive. Caitlin is here to tell you, she's currently the Chair of our Youth Engagement School Age Team, and she's here to tell you a little bit more about what we're doing for Lights On After School.
All right. Thank you, Maggie, for that introduction. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, as Maggie said, I'm a library associate at the Crooked Lake Library. I'm also the Chair of the Library's Youth Engagement School Age Team. I am very pleased to be here with you today to introduce this resolution, which recognizes the value of after-school programming in our libraries and in the wider communities we serve. Research shows that youth are less likely to engage in risky behaviors when they're connected to community institutions like libraries. In fact, the public library is uniquely positioned to support youth during after-school hours because we offer a wealth of resources to enhance learning, trained professional staff that understand youth development, and a safe community setting that is open to and trusted by the public. Our libraries are deeply embedded in the communities we serve, and we strive to build connections for youth to the ideas, information, and inspiration that will guide them in their journey to becoming engaged and successful adults. In particular, the innovative programming and volunteer opportunities the library provides offer hands-on learning experiences to youth and the chance to build stable relationships with peers and trusted adults, be they librarians or community partners that we work with. The library's collaborations with youth-serving organizations like 4H, Community Education, and the schools allow us to continue to build the quality of our programs and also a broad network of community support for youth without duplicating efforts. Our volunteer program builds teens' leadership and skills by involving them in meaningful projects where they lead the activities and help make the decisions. By recognizing Lights On After School as a celebration of quality youth programming outside of school hours, this resolution sends a very important signal of support for these library efforts and for our continued goal of strengthening our communities and supporting the development of our young people so they can grow and thrive. Thank you.
Wonderful.
And, Mr. Chair, I've had the opportunity to see some of the programs that go on at the different schools, the after, the after, after-school hours, and we'll have full classes on the computers with the kids working on different types of softwares and things like that. So it's, it's used in all our, all our libraries. So with that, I'd like to offer the resolution 2016-122 and ask that the board join me in support.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. The resolution's been offered. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know the, the kids can get into a whole lot of different variety of activities after school, and constructive activities like this are much needed in our community. So thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Caitlin, thank you.
Our third item this morning is the annual report from our Veteran Service Offices. We have a tremendous team serving the thousands of veterans living in Anoka County, and we're fortunate to have John Kreisel, our Director, with us this morning. Welcome, John. And you managed to get all the pie off your face from the pie-ing event. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll go through this here. Like you said, John Kreisel, the Director of Veteran Services. For those who aren't familiar with what we do, each county throughout the state of Minnesota has a, they have to have a county Veteran Service Office to help provide benefits, gain access to benefits for veterans, their survivors and dependents. We are very fortunate to have an awesome team here. This is who we have. We are now at full strength. Kim is our new higher issues and Iraq War veteran. Our current focus right now is using cutting-edge technology to serve our veterans in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. We're currently in the process of upgrading our claims management software to better work with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs with our goal of shortening the claims process. This should be done within the next couple of months, and it will give us the ability to be out in the public at times helping file claims with the, the official goal of being able to file claims electronically, hopefully sometime next year. That's going to be up to the VA to give access to do that. But that would, instead of taking 14 to 21 days for a claim to be mailed, go through the scanning process at the VA, at the Janesville, Wisconsin Claims Intake Center. This would upload it into the VA system within five seconds. So tremendously speed things up. In August, we began enrolling veterans in the VA Health Network electronically, shorting the enrollment process. Usually takes two to three months. It's been at about a month. We just purchased some iPads with grant money to be able to do that at the desk and, again, hopefully out in the public at outreach events. We currently have 22,975 veterans living within Anoka County. That is the fourth highest veteran population in the state of Minnesota out of the 361,000 total veterans. Last year, we had 5,360 office visits, which is an average of 20.5 visits per day. Our largest demographic is 65 and over, with over 50% being 55 and over. The VA in fiscal year 15 spent $150.5 million on veterans living in Anoka County. This includes compensation and pension benefits for veterans that were disabled due to service-connected disabilities or disabled and living in assisted-living nursing home, having low income. It helps defray some of those costs. It also helps save county and federal dollars when it comes to medical assistance. And that is our contact information for those watching online. We can be emailed at veterans@co.anoka.mn.us or 763-323-5290. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Questions, the board? Commissioner Gamache?
Thank you, John, for the report. And congratulations on getting the, the grant again for the Veterans Court. That's, I was so impressed with seeing how that works last year when I got the opportunity. And, and the success that you've had in that as well. And seeing John here all the time with a smile on his face, it's not just because the Vikings are 5-0. He always seems to have such a positive attitude. But that, congratulations on, again, getting that, that grant. It's going to help a lot of people.
Thank you.
I just wanted, John, a comment. I know I've, I've pointed a few frustrated veterans to your office and through other offices they've worked with or whatever processes they've gone through. And, and I always check up with them later to say, hey, how'd it go and what's, you know, did everything get resolved? And to see a smile on their face and to see that they're very pleased with the way you guys professionally handled it down there and, and took care of their needs and addressed their concerns, I just, I really want to thank you for that. Because these type of reports, for me at least, I think show, you know, the dedication we have to our veterans in our community and the thanks that we can show them for putting their life on the line and the work they've done for their nation. So thank you so much for this. And glad to see the numbers and glad to see a 20-some visits, you know, a day. That's, you've got a busy office going. So thank you for the hard work. And also, as I mentioned, the, you know, it's not just the good work you do down there, but it's the fundraising you do and the community outreach and everything. I mean, you're a pretty busy guy, and, and we thank you for that. So thank you, John.
I appreciate it. Happy to be here.
Okay. With that, that concludes our Chair's comments today. And we're going to move on to the committee reports, and we're going to start with the Management Committee Report. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several positions on the agenda today. The first one is the new restructure position in Human Services Social Services. We're going from a .75 FTE social worker in child protection grade 12. We are adding a .25 to it to create a 1-FTE social worker child protection grade 12. The next one in Human Services, there are two new positions, and they are two, 1-FTE social worker child protection grade 12. And, and 1 contingent social worker foster care licensing grade 12. So the three positions total.
Okay, let's, let's take the first, which is letter A there, which is the .75 FTE social worker and .25 FTE new position social worker. And changing that to 1.0 FTE social worker child protection, let's, let's take that one separately here. And is there a motion to approve that?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cordiak. Discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that motion passes. The second one is the new positions for Human Services Social Services, non-budgeted, for 1-FTE social worker child protection grade 12 and 1-FTE contingent social worker foster care licensing. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Gamache. There's a second.
Chair, a second.
Seeing by Commissioner Cordiak. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner West.
Positions are 100% funded through the state. I don't think I mentioned them.
Right, okay. And that's, and that's a good point, Commissioner West. A lot of these mandated positions come from the state. Some have funding, some don't. In this case, they do. We're very thankful for that. And as we act as an arm of the state, we, you know, we hire these people and we, we take care of the mandated service. So, okay, without further discussion then, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Correct. And that motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, the last item is on the additional agenda, and it is consider recommending consenting to County Attorney Tony Palumbo's appointment of Doreen Born-Trager to the unclassified position of Personal Secretary to the County Attorney effective October 15.
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gamache, second by Commissioner West. Discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Congratulations. Item number two. Commissioner West, item number two.
No, that's, uh...
Yeah, well, that's not management.
Okay. We will cover that.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. That would have helped.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving right along. We're going to move to the Transportation Committee, and Commissioner Schulte is here today. He's actually on a trip for the C Tib. And so I'll be covering this for him today. I don't see Doug here this morning, but we'll go ahead and, and get right into this. Item number one is the committee recommends approval of Resolution 2016-29, a resolution authorizing the county board chair and county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey property to the Anoka County Community Action Program. This is, this is a property right now that has, this is going to be, as part of the record, we want to include it as part of Lot 15, Block 4, Cusack and Carlson Blaine Oaks, Anoka County, Minnesota. And the legal description is to be developed by the Survey's Office and reviewed by the County Attorney's Office, so that's to be determined. Is there a motion to approve this?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Gamache. There's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. And you'll...
I will be abstaining on the Board of ACAP.
Okay. Any, any discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, is there a resolution as opposed to a motion on this?
There is a resolution. I apologize. So the resolution would be offered by Commissioner Gamache, which wouldn't need a second then. So yes, thank you for that catch. So the resolution's been offered, and no further discussion. All those in favor, sign.
I think you'd better do a roll call.
Roll call. Okay. We'll do a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Epstein.
And that motion passes. Thank you. Item number two is the committee recommends approval of purchase of services agreement, C-005292, with TKDA Consulting for Engineering Services regarding Project SP002-678-022 on your monitor there. The 2019 Hanson Boulevard Reconstruction Project in the amount of $103,400, and further authorize the county, the Chair of the County Board and the County Administrator to execute said agreement, subject to review by the County Attorney as to form and legality. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move it, Chairman.
Moved by Commissioner Cordiak.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion? I believe this is, with regards to the Hanson project, uh, bridge that goes over the train tracks there, there's needed consulting engineering work for that project to get us ready for that, completing that project when the final state money comes in. So without further discussion, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, this project is important for our area and going north, especially into, all the way up to Oak Grove and on from, on Hanson Boulevard because of the amount of traffic. If anybody's on 100, on Hanson Boulevard after 139th, when it goes from four lanes down to two again, it's a nightmare both morning going to work and night coming home. So looking forward to the project in 2019, and I know that the bridge has always been an issue because it's, you know, getting across Crook, or Coon Creek, I believe it is. So this will be, this will be well, everybody's, everybody's looking forward to this project and going forward.
Absolutely. I did misspeak. This doesn't have to do with the rail grade. This is a different project. This is one north of that.
Yep.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, without further discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Thank you. The third item is the committee recommends approval to increase contract, C-004893, by $11,444.38 to a total of $178,229.38 for the successful completion of CP14-62-00. This is the Signal Interconnect Project at various locations throughout Anoka County, identified on the map there. And again, this is a project we've been working on that has one light as green. When you come to the next one, it'll be green, so there's not the unnecessary stopping. And of course, it'll save fuel in the process and, and a lot of frustration. So, good project and a small increase there to the project for that completion. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that motion passes. The next item is the committee recommends approval of sub-recipient grant agreements, SG-2016-011, for Project C-005206. This is for the period of October 1, 2016 to December 31, 2018 with Metropolitan Council for CMAC funds for the Fridley-Norstar Station Shuttle Project. And this is a project where they've identified concerns from our local area employers, Medtronic, Onin, and some larger employers, that the last mile concept, people aren't able to get from the train to their place of employment. They don't have a car, so therefore they don't use the train. And so this grant agreement is for a shuttle bus that'll be running between these major employers to allow people to... employers to allow people to connect. Now, they were using buses in the past, but buses have a time schedule that they have to keep, so if the train was delayed for any reason, a person on the tracks, or an accident, or any, any of those reasons, that bus would leave, and then there was no bus to take these people to their place of employment. So there was a fundamental flaw in the connectivity of those employees getting to work, and this Norstar Shuttle Project will hopefully not only connect people, but hopefully will offer the opportunity for people to use the train, reduce congestion hopefully, and get them to work, and from work to the train back and safely back home. So a great project and very excited about it. I will go ahead and move it, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cordyak. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. And that motion passes. Wonderful, thank you very much for that. The next committee report is the Internal Audit Committee Report. Commissioner Cordyak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met recently, once again, you know, this is a committee that continuously examines risks and exposure to Anoka County. Really importantly, what we, what we do, whether it's reputation or finances or other exposures, we're constantly looking out for that, keep, ensure Anoka County is best faced and best practices. The last meeting, we had a discussion among, amongst other things about the right-of-way payment, payments. And you recognize, every time Anoka County does a roadway project of any kind, months and years ahead of time, we have to get in there and deal with right-of-ways and that examination, dealing with people and money and finance, and it's a complicated discussion. Want to make sure that that process was working effectively. We conclude that for the most part it is, and the other items also are for information purposes, and that does conclude today's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordyak. We'll move on to the Parks and Community Services Committee Report. Commissioner Cordyak.
Mr. Chairman, I'll also be brief today. We recognized recently with the trip out to the Wargo Nature Center area, the Anoka County Heritage Lab, the shared project that we have with Conexus there and YMCA and others, we're very happy with the outcomes, we entertained thousands of young students. We recently engaged in a project working with the University of Minnesota to create a variety of platforms out there that the presenters and attendees can utilize, either for shelter or for exposure or for presentation, augment what they're doing. We have little out there today, but simple lean-tos, and today, now, we have a very fine outcome. This is really a grant opportunity that was, among others, this is a $20,000 gift from the YMCA toward this overall project, this is one of several grants that we've gotten, and today, I'd like to ask you to, I'd like to move the Resolution 2016 PRK 16, accepting the gift of $20,000 toward that project.
Okay, the resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordyak, is there a discussion? Just want to comment that if you haven't had an opportunity to come out and see the work that they've done here, it's absolutely fantastic. Matter of fact, there are people from art institutes coming out and taking pictures of the backdrop in the woods and the, and the creative forms that are made here, because it's of artistic interest. It's very, very intriguing, and if you haven't had a chance to come out and look at this, especially during the fall, with the fall leaves changing, it's, it's an experience you won't regret. Kids would love it, running around, having a lot of fun, so there's still some work to be done on the time machine, as they refer to it, that's not the time machine, but some young, some youth referred to it as a time machine, but it's very creative and some, some, a lot of hard work went into it, a lot of thought, and some students from the University of Minnesota, I believe, Commissioner Cordyak.
Yes.
Designed and, you know, from architecture and engineering and applied their skills and came up with what I think is, is truly, truly impressive. So I want to thank you, Commissioner Cordyak, and, and John Von De Lindy, and everyone involved in helping to bring these multiple, multiple members together to participate in this, and certainly the YMCA for their kind donation here to make this happen. I know my, my boys have gone out to the Heritage Lab, and I think they've dissected frogs and things of this nature, and so my kids absolutely think it's the greatest thing, and if they think it's great, then, then all kids will think it's great, I can assure you, so. Okay, without further discussion, we have a resolution before us, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
And that resolution passes, thank you.
And the other items are for information purposes, on them, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordyak. We have one additional item left here for our consideration, and that is to consider approving contracts, see 005314, the dental insurance renewal for health partners for 30-hour or more per week benefit eligible positions of non-union and union employees for a one-year period ending December 31, 2017, as recommended by the responsible commissioner for insurance. As you'll note, there is a slight increase of 2.5% on this, and they had a rate cap